We've had people just volunteer.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call the agenda session to order for the May 6, 2014 City Council meeting. The first thing I want to start off with today is we've got the numbers in. I got them late Thursday afternoon on the cost of the preliminary cost of the deck, the estimates. And I wanted to go, Jeremy's going to give you a report on those. And we got them Thursday and I just keeps with what we've been doing all along and keep you up to speed as it comes in. So, I wanted to share these. We wanted to share these with you today. And then you're going to have to make some decisions later on on what we do with the information. Ah, Jeremy?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. I want to do a quick presentation. I only have, I think, four slides here. Really, the slides aren't the important part, I think, about today's discussion. The more important part about this is we'll give you a status update on where we are in the latest round of cost estimating for the Spring Street Municipal Parking Deck. As you all know, the Mayor's been committed to keeping the Council informed on the progress of this project, so we wanted to do that and give you that update. So, just very quickly, obviously, this is the site. This is the general site plan showing the North Liner Building. We're committed to constructing the shell of a basement at our cost for this project that will be utilized in for back-of-house facilities. That's coming out of the parking revenue fund. And then there's also replacement office space for the Wal-Mart Center Building which sits roughly here. The administrative offices, about 5,500 square feet worth within this building. And then they are also potentially planning an expansion that's at their cost within that liner building. Of course, the deck, which is around 245 spaces currently as we have it laid out. The South Liner Building here. And then you all remember our last presentation, January 28, was about this particular liner building. I have some conceptual images of what that might look like after 60 percent DD drawings have been completed. So, that's the overall layout. This is the first floor. So, again, you have an entrance from Spring Street. Go up the ramps. No entrance here yet from School Avenue until you get to the next level. And then this shows three different levels. So, here then you get the School Avenue entrance and you begin going up into the last fourth level, which is just a partial level of parking here. This is the overall concept. You haven't seen this right here yet, but, and we're still working on some, just some details of that through our review of the cost estimates. But, this is the general conceptualized idea of what that building could look like. The smaller liner building, if you remember, it's basically from this wall surface out about 12 feet in depth. And then there's potential, obviously, for a different type of liner building, a housing liner building, if you remember that presentation, to go along the length of this, which would be a separate project. But, we have designed this facility to accommodate that if it does indeed occur. And then here again is the liner building. So, that's just generally the conceptual idea of what that might look like. These two buildings don't structural, they don't interact with one another. You can't get from this building into this building. They're two separate and distinct buildings. But, you can access each from different levels of the parking garage and then also at grade. Here's our update of the project timeline. The last time we came here, we were having a southeast building discussion in direction. That was January 28. As we discussed, we completed the preliminary design, which was 60 percent drawings for the deck and the North Liner Building by the end of March. We did meet that deadline. We also, in April, did the selection process for the Wal-Mart Center temporary office space. And that agreement was approved. And we're moving forward on that lease, the facility improvements that will have to occur to move them into that space. The rest of my presentation really is related to the costs. And so, while we are continuing on this next section here, April and May, final design and cost estimates, we did at the same time request for cost estimates based on the 60 percent drawings. Last week, we received those from Baldwin and Shell, which is our construction manager for the project, based on those drawings that were submitted by Garber Engineers. There's two separate numbers that I will reference. One are the parking deck bond funds. Those are the bonds, obviously, that we issued in 2012. And then also parking revenues. So, we're pulling from two, primarily two budgets for this project. The shell of the basement, as I mentioned, of the Northern Liner Building, to which the City Council committed constructing, is currently estimated around $623,000. That's about $223,000 above what we originally estimated would be the budget in 2012. For the deck and the south and east liner buildings, the estimated cost is currently a little over $5.9 million. To date, that places around 1.7 million above our current budget allocation. And you can see there in your memo below, I've put together the April numbers, which is what we got last week, the November numbers for 2013. As you can see, those have gone up about $700,000 in the parking deck. Here goes Matthew.
Thank you.
About $700,000 increase in estimates for the parking deck and about, as I mentioned, about $223,000 for the estimates in the North Liner Basement Shell. Because the construction of the parking deck will remove the Wal-Mart Center offices, I mentioned earlier, the city also agreed to replace that lost office space as part of that project. It's about 5,500 square feet. In total, when you take the portion that we're putting toward that office currently and our current estimated overages, the design, based on those design drawings, we're about one point, a little over $1.9 million above our current budgeted allocation. That includes our design costs, the construction costs that are estimated by Baldwin and Shell, the Wal-Mart Center items related, such as leasing the temporary offices, moving expenses, replacement office space, essentially everything within this project that we have going forward. I've attached a worksheet. It's on the third page of your packet there, giving you a breakdown, basically, of the total cost of the budget from all the different funds, including Water and Sewer Fund, that we did to upgrade some lines in that area, the city costs that we have currently estimated, and the, what we have over budget. And then I broke those into the different funds as well. The city, the Wal-Mart Center, and our design consultants, as you can imagine, were disappointed to see those numbers go up, particularly after we had worked for several months on value engineering. Ron can go into detail if you'd like, but we've done a lot in value engineering. We removed a whole line of columns. We actually cut back on the top layer of the deck, removing some of the actual parking deck. A lot of diligent work has gone into reducing a lot of those items. And those costs came down because of it. However, we've also seen increased costs. Some of the line items that we received in the cost estimates last week are very easily explained. Concrete materials and labor went up $200,000 alone within our, within the deck. Well, if you think about it, the deck is primarily concrete, and we're seeing about a 10 to 15 percent increase in the region in concrete materials alone. So, that's something that we're concerned about, particularly as we keep on going down the road. And we'll see that in other projects as well we're concerned about. So, there's a direct proportional impact to that. The addition of the east liner building, and then we relocated stormwater structures to allow for that potential opportunity for a housing liner building on the east side, as supported by the Council, also had some direct costs. And you can see that particularly in estimates where those change. We also, if that project is realized, we will realize savings above and beyond those costs. So, it's something we had to make a decision on during the design phase in hopes that that project happens and we can reduce that cost. If we don't, then we'll see that increase because we certainly won't go back in design to take it back. Those are some of the ones that are very apparent when you look at the estimates. There are other increases, though, that aren't so apparently explained, and they certainly deserve more detailed examination. That's exactly what we're doing right now. And while this is not positive news, the good thing about it, it remains an estimate. This is not a bid that we received and opened and found out at the very end of the design that we're this much over. We're still in the design process, although we're near the end of the design process. We're still in the design process. So, Garber and the city have begun the process, continue the process, really, of reviewing those line items, materials, quantities, design decisions, in an effort to reduce the cost. Since Wednesday evening, when we received these numbers, we've identified with Garber's, specifically with Garber's help, around $400,000 in this $700,000 overage that we saw since the last estimate, of savings, of potential savings that we could reduce. So, we feel like there's still, there's still items and decisions that can be made to continue reducing the cost here. And they, the Garber has submitted a letter in your packet. I just want to hit included a copy. They really feel that this should be considered still a draft cost estimate and very strongly about that. We obviously have concerns because we continue to get further and further along in this project. And normally, with the construction manager process, the more and more detail you get, hopefully, the cost comes down. We're seeing a little bit of both. You're seeing some costs come down because of that, but some costs go up because of time and materials increase. And that's not the only reason, but we're certainly trying to, we're striving to find all those, all those items that we can, we can reduce and price. We do believe it's important for the Council to know that, given the current design, the parking deck, we do not anticipate is going to come in at the original construction cost budgeted back in 2012 of 4.2 million dollars without some pretty dramatic design changes. And we just want you to know that upfront. The Mayor is wanting us to commit to that. A lot of times, we'll come forward with a plan of action and we'll wait to give this information to you until we have all the recommendations that we're going forward on. We don't have all those recommendations today. We wanted to present this information to you all first and let you know that we're continuing to work on those. We hope by the next agenda session, we'll have had enough time to present some recommendations to you or present some decisions that we've made to help further reduce those costs. That's two weeks away, so we'll see what we can do within those two weeks. But, very clearly to us, time is money. That's in your memo. Time is money, and the city's projects are no exception to that. So, our strong recommendation and the Mayor's recommendation that we feel is important to keep this project on the current schedule, as we have identified up here as much as possible, to hopefully reduce the impact of increase in the cost due to time delay. Our recommendation at this point is to continue working together with our design teams mutually, Bora Architects, which is with the Wal-Mart Center, and Garber, AFJ, HJ, and Carl Walker on our side, to get this project to, at least to bid, so then we know some hard numbers. We understand where we are in real dollars and where we should make some difficult decisions, possibly. Or, if we're within line, of course, we might be, possibly some other funding decisions. So, that's where we are today. As I mentioned, I included a brief breakdown of the city budget versus city costs and the information from Garber as well, showing you just very, again, broad-brust stroke where we feel like we can reduce at least $400,000 out of this potential cost. I will say, we are continuing to go forward with this project, which is, as we have shown and committed to you, currently designed, with the liner building on the south and the east side, roughly 245 parking spots. And then, of course, the north liner building. I don't have his images there. This is really the new one. You've seen the other one before. And we continue to work with the Wal-Mart Center as well. We are not the only ones seeing cost increases. Their project, their expansion, the North Liner Building as a whole is seeing cost increases. Baldwin and Shell is the project manager for that, construction manager for that project as well. So, this is across the board that we're all working together to try to get back into a level of construction we feel is feasible based on our time constraints and our budget constraints. Happy to take any questions. And Mayor, or Tom, I don't know if you wanted to add anything beyond that.
Well, I just want to say, this is numbers you came in. Now, I want y'all to know, when I find out about it, I want you to find out the difference. And so, it is what it is. I know that we talked somewhat in December about doing some sort of cuts or something that I felt is that the Council wanted to move forward with the design that we originally went with. So, this is, that design is basically the cost. I mean, I was doing some sort of drastic decisions. I certainly didn't want to do that. That's certainly consolation with you all before I made any kind of decision like that. Went well, meant to be yours anyway. So...
Pursuing for this state here, if we continue forward as planned, we may have some challenges to get through, if we continue value engineering, but we would like to still solicit construction bids in June and hopefully get a construction contract, at least the bids in by July. That's pushing Garber quite a bit just to make some pretty difficult design decisions and get some decisions made that would reduce cost. And we'll continue working with them as much as we can, and we'll certainly update you on any changes there. But, that's what we're continuing shooting for. This really has never changed, at least since we worded contracts. Summer, fall, 2015 is still our anticipated timeframe for construction, starting construction this summer. Some of these items have moved around as the, as the project sort of matured, but we're still trying to hold to that, hold to that line on starting construction, completing construction, as we initially estimated about a 12 to 14 month long process. And the closer and closer we get to that, obviously, these become more and more important to make. So, we're striving very hard to do that.
Jeremy, can you go back to the pictures?
Sure. With this one or?
Yeah.
You want me to turn the light down?
What is the thinking on, why is that building so high up above the street? Is the liner building, is it tied to the deck or why is it not tied more to the street?
It is. It's tied, two things. It's tied to this level of the deck here, which is below grade. This floor actually extends below this, this level. So, this building will extend below that, sort of a basement level. This is at grade to get ADA accommodation right here off of the street. So, it's about 12 by 58 roughly. Is that the dimension of that? I think it's about 58, 50, 40, something like that, feet long. And that's the ADA access here. This is still your comment, I know, and it's something that we've brought up. Again, this is a conceptual level. We have some ideas of how to, how to address some of, some of this here that you see. And it's certainly not lost. I almost mentioned it during the presentation, but I didn't want to get into the detail. But, yeah, that's definitely something that we're still working on.
The intent of this is to activate the street skate.
Sure.
And when it's that high up, it doesn't do that. So, I just want to make sure for instance, in all this money, that we get that right. And maybe not just dress up that wall, but put the access to it from the street, not just that one little corner. So, I don't know. I mean, is there habitable space below that? Is there a basement level?
I think there's basement level that extends, like storage level that extends below that.
Same level as the liner building.
This building here. So, this here comes all the way under, and the ceiling is the same plane as, as this ceiling here comes through like that. So, this...
But, I thought they weren't tied together.
They're not. They don't, you don't access one, you don't access this building from this building and get between the two.
Okay.
It's just underneath it. So, you don't have to do a post-tension concrete here. We put that at grade and this rest in on top of that other building. To stop this here and do post-tension, it would be much more expensive to do that, that section.
Okay. And then...
Did I say that right or wrong? Roughly.
And then if we're putting, if we do end up scrapping that building in favor of the housing scenario, how will that affect that?
Well, I'll have to work with their design team specifically on this, how this, how this interacts with that as that project goes forward. We don't really know what that looks like or how that interacts, how far it comes down even yet. I guess we haven't really seen anything from that, that project yet. But, it is certainly a communication and coordination effort for this, and even the foundations underneath this building to extend into that space. It's something we would have to work through. And speaking with Rob Sharp, they felt like they could help, they could coordinate all those, all those moving pieces.
I just wonder if we're making a mistake at pulling that space all the way under that and mingling those two structures in that way? If maybe we should just stop the south liner building?
Pull this back.
Yeah. Pull it, not necessarily pull it back, but drop the east liner, I'm sorry, is that east? Yeah, the east liner building down to a better relationship with the street and have no connection underneath to the other liner building. As a cleaner way to divide the projects. But, I'm sure the engineers thought about that. It's just nice if I can, if we do go with the other strategy.
Yeah. At this point, if it's a cost reduction, we are investigating all potential opportunities there, so...
What else, Mr.? Yes, ma'am?
So, just to put a ribbon on this, so I, I want to make sure I understand this right. We're two million short. Best-case scenario today is we get a little more than $400,000 in savings from the design changes that you and Garber have identified.
Well, that's just a day's worth or so of review. We feel like there's...
Assuming all that's correct.
Correct. We think that we, we actually think there's more savings in there.
Right.
As we go through that. But, yes.
That number and then another $340,000 for the housing, again, best-case scenario, which puts us at still around about 1.2 million in the red that we even need to come up with in more savings or cut something from the project entirely or find a new funding source.
Right. Or, the reason we're also recommending to get to bids is we feel like there are certainly realized costs in a bid, competitively bid project, which we're not seeing with cost estimates. You're simply, here's the cost of this as we see it. It's not someone trying to get that project, you know, for free.
So, that's the wild card.
It is a wild card. We don't know what it is. It depends on what other types of projects are out there, how many we're able to get bid. But, we will, although this is a construction manager process, it's a guaranteed maximum price, so they handle all of the subcontracts. We will bid it just like it's a public project. So, we'll advertise. It won't be preferential, you know, subcontractors picked. It will be bid, opened in this room, just like we do any other open bid process. It will look at bid tabs, go through those, and make those selections as a, as a full unit. And so, we feel like that, that saves the city money in the long, in the long run by doing that process, just as if we were bidding the project the normal, the normal way. But, yes, that we don't know what that percent is, and I wouldn't really want to even throw a number out at this point in time.
Follow-up on that, I think, two things. One is to develop the final strategy of design mix versus additional funding, et cetera, really won't be able to be done until we have a hard-bid number. That's the biggest question mark. The second issue, because I want to be clear and that it doesn't get lost in the statement of what Jeremy read, and that is, we don't believe that you will be able to get enough cuts to that original number, period, at the design that the Council has stated in our meetings that you would like to see. Even with the building portion for housing, we still believe that we have the potential of being over that number. So, that we're going to have to have a strategy to identify how to fund it unless the Council is going to have to change in its design interest. Because this is more, it correlates to, you can go through the items and see the change when we added it back. There's a cost correlation to it. And the biggest issue, and we say it over and over and over, just in the time period that we did three months for the Wal-Mart Center to do the site planning for their site to ensure that all this would work, and the time we've done to redesign, you already have a 5 to 10 percent increase in just overall construction in that six-month period. That's why we keep saying time is money and we have to stay on the schedule. Because what we don't want to be doing is cutting items, only turn around and have it increased due to increased cost of actual materials and labor. So, we're probably going to have a discussion at some point about what that gap is and how to deal with it. We just don't know how big a gap it will be yet until we have a bid. We get to hard bid.
And as you all know, that number, what that is, will determine on the strategy of how we, what we recommend to fund, how we recommend to fund that, so...
But, we hope the housing project, if it's going to come forward, comes forward timely because it has an advantage to that discussion.
Yep.
And we will ultimately have to have some, you know, just decisions that keep this thing moving forward, so we're not sitting around with paralysis of analysis and watching costs increase.
Jimmy, do we have any indication when we might be getting those numbers regarding the housing?
I don't. I don't have a, I can, I'll find an update, try to get an update from Rob Sharp on that process. I know they've selected an architect to do conceptual, conceptualization and design. And I don't know if you have any more than that, Matthew, but I can, I can try to find.
They're in the middle of schematics right now, so the very beginning of the process. But, in our first conversations, he estimated that from front to back, and we're a few months in now, it definitely wouldn't even take a year to get finished with that, so...
A year to take for the design?
No, for...
For full construction?
From the city saying, "We want you to investigate this," from them saying, "We're ready to apply for a building permit and you to do our change order."
Okay. The other question I have, this, this liner building here that we're looking at, the, yes, that, now, that is the one that we added at the last time, correct? And what is the exact expense of that?
Um, you know, I don't, I don't know the exact, we can probably tease that out a little bit. Uh, the last estimates that we gave in January when we decided that, I think, were, do you remember that, Ron?
From 150, something like that.
Hundred and fifty thousand?
Mm-hmm.
To add that, just to add that liner bit?
There's some, some costs regardless. So, there's, you know, there was an existing patio there before to reduce, to go back to that. We reduced some cost, obviously, but that wasn't, that was obviously very clear to the direction that we wanted to go with, with this liner building. That certainly remains an option to deduct that from the project, but we've included it right now for the estimates. And you can, and like I said, you can clearly see that when you start going through, you know, this binder of line items, you see glass that wasn't included in the last estimate include, is on the new estimate. So, that's something we're going to investigate, okay? What does the downtown master, downtown code say that the minimum percentage of glass is? Right now, it's basically floor to ceiling, so perhaps reduce that to reduce some of that cost if there's a cost saving. So, those are the types of things we're going through on a, on a line item basis. So, that's one example of something that we could hopefully reduce by, by some.
And did we have to do any foundation changes in order to add that?
We did.
And so, that added some expense, right? In addition to the 150?
Yeah, a significant amount of expenses that wasn't included in the 150 that we know we can predict pretty easily. Just the way they had shoreing up against the road, there's a lot of items like that that we can work with them to reduce, and they're big numbers. They're part of the 400.
Okay.
Yeah, so some of those items, I didn't mention them specifically, but redesign to remove some bank shoring under pending, under pending, redesign a pipe system to reduce trench safety costs. If you have a certain depth trench, you have to have trench safety, reduce the, change the design of that. You can potentially reduce that. Electrical work, $100,000 over, reducing some of the rainwater harvesting, at least the size of it is a potential. So, it's well exceeds what the need is currently. So, those are some things we can, we can assist with, that we just identified with a cursory review.
One more. I guess this is probably more for Paul. So, I know that because we're paying for this with tax and tax bonds, that the activities that take place in the building are restricted to municipal purposes?
That's correct.
If this comes down to brass tacks and we choose another funding source to cover the deficit on this project, does that mean that we would be able to do non-municipal uses in the portion of the project that was paid for with the other fund? No?
No, because, I mean, you won't be able to divorce, you really won't be able to divorce something from the project. I mean, it'll be, we'll have to fund it with additional revenue some way, but it'll be immersed within the project. It will be nothing that's totally separate. It would have to be totally separate from the project to get into a profit generating situation.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll be back probably, I think, Jeremy, a couple of weeks.
I hope so. If we don't, we'll let you know, obviously. But, that's, we're moving forward as quickly as we possibly can. A lot of our time is devoted to this right now, obviously. It's an important project, and we're getting closer and closer to construction, so...
We've been working probably since last, I don't know. I was looking at the numbers Thursday afternoon, late, and started working on it Friday and Monday and today. And I think, you know, we're, we can work it out. But, we just have to figure out what we need to do. Okay. If there's nothing else on that, then we will go on to the consent agenda. Number, number one, we have the approval of the April 15, 2014 City Council meeting minutes. Number two, animal services donation revenue. Resolution to approve a budget adjustment in a total amount of $9,588, representing donation revenue to animal services for the first quarter of 2014. Any comments or questions on that? Okay. Number three, 2014 Bulletproof Fest Partnership Program. Resolution authorized a 50% matching grant application to the 2014 Bulletproof Fest Partnership Program, seeking a grant. Any amount of $42,000... seeing a grant, any amount of forty-two thousand dollars for the replacement of body armor vests for federal police officers and emergency response team officers. Any comments or questions on that? All right, number four, Garber LLC, a resolution to approve a professional engineering services agreement with Garber LLC for surveying and design services related to the installation of propane fueling system, Happy Hollow Maintenance Site, in the amount of thirty-three thousand eight hundred dollars, approving the project contingency of three thousand three hundred eighty dollars and approving budget adjustment. Any comments or questions on that? All right, number five, bid number ten dash forty-seven, King Electric Contractors. Resolution authorized the contract King Electrical Contractors in the amount of thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars pursuant to bid number ten dash forty-seven for the installation of LED trail light fixtures and light poles along the Chalagui Trail and to approve a ten percent project contingency. Any comments or questions on that? Number six, bid number fourteen dash twenty-three, First Light and Watley Incorporated. Resolution to authorize the purchase of LED trail light fixtures from First Light of Tulsa in the amount of eighty-seven thousand forty-eight dollars plus applicable sales tax and authorize the purchase of light poles from Watley Incorporated in the amount of twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars plus applicable sales tax pursuant to bid number fourteen dash twenty-three for installation along the Chalagui Trail. Any comments or questions on that? Now, number seven, McClellan Consulting Engineers Incorporated. Resolution authorized professional engineering services agreement with McClellan Consulting Engineers Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars for design and related services for improvements to Zion Road. I assume this has been through the street committee?
It has.
Everybody good with that? All right. Number eight, Jordinson Associates Incorporated. Resolution authorized professional engineering services agreement with Jordinson Associates Incorporated in the amount not to exceed three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for design and related services to the extension of Rooker Road from Persimmon Street to Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Assume this has been through the street committee. Everybody good? Okay. Number nine, amend resolution two eighteen dash thirteen. Resolution to amend resolution number two eighteen dash thirteen to approve change order and authorize a payment in the amount of three thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-four cents to the Royal Communications Incorporated for Phase One of Access Control Project, to authorize a payment of twenty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eleven cents to Royal Communications Incorporated for equipment already purchased for Phase Two to cancel the existing contract with Royal Communications Incorporated for Phase Two and Three, to approve a contract with Electrolinks Incorporated through RFP thirteen dash eleven for Phases Two and Three of Access Control Project in total amount of forty-two thousand two hundred and six dollars to authorize a ten percent project contingency and approve a budget adjustment. Who has this? Yes, please.
This is a major project where we're, uh, changing the access control system for all the locking systems. Uh, it has several departments involved, police being one of them, solid waste being another, airport being another. Phase one was pleased, okay? We selected the contractor Royal to do the installation of this equipment. We've had nothing but problems. We want to wind that up. They've already purchased equipment we need to install, and we want to go to the next highest bidder. So, we weren't satisfied with the performance, although Phase One has been done. We want to go to the next highest bidder, which will cost us a bit more, with smoother project, before we go on with the solid waste and the airport, so that's what this is about.
Any questions for Paul on this? Okay. Number ten, RJN Group Incorporated. Resolution to approve a contract with RJN Group Incorporated in the amount of fifty-six thousand dollars for professional engineering services and to approve budget adjustment.
This is the item that we had on the agenda that was pulled previously because we needed to do a selection committee, we did a selection committee, RJN was selected, and so now we bring this same item back to you for the same reason.
Okay. Comments, questions on that? All right, under new business, Loson Associates Incorporated Amendment Number One. Resolution to approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement for Professional Landscape, Architectural and Engineering Services with Loson Associates Incorporated in the amount of not to exceed seven hundred and twenty-six thousand twenty-two dollars for design and construction documentation of the regional park. Alex?
No. Um, last November, a contract was approved with Loson Associates for them to provide a master plan design for the regional park. Um, they've completed that phase, and this is a request to continue on with the detailed design for Phase One. Um, this contract amendment would include, um, infrastructure for the park, um, including water sewer roadway design, stormwater improvements, as well as the park amenities such as the soccer fields, baseball fields, concession areas, and the great lawn. Um, if this is approved, we anticipate to have bids out late this fall and hopefully start construction by the end of the year.
Yay.
And I will be doing a brief presentation at the end of this meeting tonight to give you an update on the plan and, and what it's looking like.
Okay. Any questions, Charles, right now, anyway? Okay. Number two, Whole Foods Incorporated. Resolution to express the City Council's intention to pay for the installation of a traffic signal at Sonic Drive and College Avenue if Whole Foods Incorporated constructs a store at this intersection to approve a budget adjustment of fifty thousand dollars. Who has that one?
Yes, I-
Yes, Stella?
Um, Justin Tennant is bringing this resolution forward, and he, um, had to be out of the country and asked me to read this letter to, um, to you all. Uh, "To my fellow City Council members and Mayor Jordan, as you are all aware, Whole Foods has submitted plans to build a retail center in East Fayetteville near the new flyover uptown area. They are proposing to occupy the area, which is currently an abandoned car dealership that is sometimes used for overflow auto inventory from a neighboring dealership. It came to my attention that a traffic light is needed at the intersection of Masonic and College, which will serve as the primary way in and out of the proposed development. I believe the city should invest a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build a traffic light, which is the estimated cost. This partnership, um, between the city and Whole Food is important for our citizens, both in the short term and the long term. There are many reasons this traffic light should be built and paid for by the city. The twenty-five million investment of Whole Foods in Fayetteville is expected to create a hundred and forty jobs at the average annual wage of forty thousand dollars each. The estimated total annual payroll is five point six million. The estimated average hourly wage exceeds nineteen dollars per hour. The sales tax revenue for the retail center is estimated to be between eight hundred and one point two million dollars annually. Traffic light, this traffic light is needed on that section of North College as stated by the State of Arkansas Highway Department letter you all have in your packet. I believe this will improve safety for the drivers and pedestrians in the area. Regarding the site itself, this real estate is one of the first things visitors see as they enter our city from the five forty expressway. We have discussed on the council making North College a more beautiful and productive street, and I believe this development will be a tremendous improvement to what is there now. I want Fayetteville to be known as a city that is willing to help business thrive. I want to be sure we are looking for the right businesses to partner with, and Whole Foods is unquestionably one of those. It fits perfectly in Fayetteville, and we need to show we are truly a community and a partner in their business plans. The city will get tremendous return on this investment for these and many other reasons for decades to come. Thank you, Justin Tennant, Alderman Moore, three.
Okay. This has been a project we've worked on for a while. Anyway, any questions or anything, or comments, or?
Well, I just think, I, I just want to add my, my part. I just feel that we know that we're in competition for this, this establishment, and I think anything we can do to let Whole Foods know that we would like to have them in Fayetteville and we'll work with them any way that's reasonable within our budget. Um, so I would certainly, uh, support our, our doing this and working with them in any way possible.
I know that myself and the chief of staff, I mean, the chief of staff and, uh, Chamber of Commerce president have met with Whole Foods, and they, they seem, uh, pretty excited about being here, so. Um, I think it's, uh, I think it's a worthy investment for us, I really do. Invest, invest about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a twenty-five million dollar business, that's a pretty good return. Okay, anything else? Yes, Al?
Does anybody have an issue putting that on the consent agenda?
No, I don't. Everybody good?
Can I just ask one question before we do that?
Yep.
To Kit. Kit, you've got a memo in here that I appreciate you adding, because I had questions about, I don't know that, since I've been on the council, we've done something like this. I thought we did always ask the company coming in to pay, so could you just, I, I can read your, your memo, and I appreciate it, but could you just talk about that for a minute?
Well, normally, uh, when there's a traffic improvement that is generated, the need for it is generated by a development, and our Unified Development Code sets forth, uh, the fact that we will, uh, request that they pay their proportionate share. Uh, we should still, you know, pay our share, uh, for the existing need that, that is there, but then, we have asked developers in the past to pay a proportional share of a traffic improvement, whether it be additional lanes, uh, the traffic lighting that come and go, where they're paying a share of that also, and, and other developments have done that. However, uh, the City Council has the, the right to build its own infrastructure, and this traffic signal is its own infrastructure. I know that in, in earlier cases, we have looked to try to help, uh, for example, an industry to come in, and we have, uh, considered to build, uh, new water mains and sewer mains to reach them, even though that would normally be their requirement. But in order to try to entice them to come into Fayetteville, uh, we have built our own infrastructure, and that's certainly constitutional to do that. This makes really almost more sense, because when you're talking about a commercial development, and we do receive much more back in money in taxes from sales taxes than we would ever do from property taxes, which of course, we get very, very little, uh, most, almost all that goes to the school district. So in this particular case, with a, a retail business, that's not only going to pay property taxes, but, but also collect a whole bunch of sales taxes, and as Justin said, this is a, a pretty good investment, I think, uh, in order to try to secure what I think a lot of you all and our citizens might believe is a very good business to have in Fayetteville.
Thank you. I'm happy with putting it on consent. I think one of the things that jumped out of, of the page to me also was that there are four accidents, oh, what'd he say, a week there? I'm, I'm sure that came from some, so, a, an accident every four days on the stretch of roads, and so it seems to me we need to, we need to-
There certainly is-
We need to help no matter what, so.
There, there is a need even bef, even without this development, uh, for safety.
And I'd like for us to kind of point that out. And I'm glad he did in the memo, but, yeah, there is a need, so I'm good with moving it.
Okay. Everybody good with it?
Yep.
Okay, well, we'll put it on consent then. Thank you all. All right, number three, RZN fourteen dash forty-six fifty-nine, west side of Beechwood and south of Domain Beechwood Properties. In ordinance rezoning, that property described rezoning petition, RZN fourteen dash forty-six fifty-nine for approximately nine point seven four acres located at the west side of Beechwood, south of the domain from I one, heavy commercial light industrial to CS Community Services.
Chairman?
The property is owned I one, it's off of, south of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, west of Beechwood Avenue. You've seen, uh, two rezonees, uh, along this stretch, uh, recently. Uh, we're excited about that, because this has traditionally not been, uh, a place for residential development. Uh, there's a lot of commercial here, but, um, we feel like this, the additional residential development uh, within this area will help support that commercial and help, help even redevelop some of the commercial areas along, uh, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Um, the anticipated use for this property, while rezoned community services is also residential, is directly south of, um, what was called the domain, or now called University Housing, or University House. Um, and, uh, it's currently developed with a, a large parking lot that would be, um, relocated on, on the property to the south. Um, the, uh, community services zoning district, we feel, um, is a significant down zone from I one, provide opportunity for redevelopment in that area. Uh, planning commission voted eight to zero. Uh, we do feel it's compatible with the land uses in this area, and staff is recommending approval.
Any questions on this? Okay. Number four, Vacation fourteen dash forty-six fifty-five, southwest corner of Razorback and Fifteenth, Razorback Student Housing, in ordinance approving Vacation fourteen dash forty-six fifty-five, submitted by Crafton Toll for property located southwest corner of Razorback and Fifteenth Street to vacate a portion of the utilities, but, Jeremy?
This is a, uh, multifamily development, uh, that you all have approved as a PVD, actually, a couple of different times. Um, it's got a, the latest iteration is a little smaller, actually, in, in density and size. Um, one of the requests, I think with all those projects, that was going to be required is this vacation, um, which is a utility easement along the eastern portion of the property, directly adjacent to Razorback Road. Um, there's a condition of approval, um, on the, on the easement vacation that a water line shall be installed along that side of the road, um, but otherwise, there were no objections to the easement vacation. Planning commission voted nine to zero, and staff is also recommending approval.
Any questions? Yes, Sarah?
Speaking of intersection improvement, um, Razorback and Fifteenth, what is planned for that? Because it has been met.
We, um, we do have some funding for, uh, a signal. Um, I'm not sure, uh, if we have a complete funding, but there is a, a development there where the university square, commercial development is located. Um, they put up some money for, for a signal. Um, I'm not sure what, what that is to, uh, right now, if it would fully fund that. We've looked at a couple of different iterations, whether a roundabout could work there, whether a signal could work there, it's a, obviously, a very large intersection. Um, and so, it, it's something we have investigated, it's not made our, um, top list of priorities just because the, the amount of traffic, except for game days, is in, is in a high, um, quantity. It's not a high level, um, but, uh, it's certainly something that's on our radar screen to look at in the future, um, and we do have some funding for that. We've had to identify that, if a traffic signal is the best thing there, if a roundabout's the best thing there, or what, or what might be.
Because it's virtually impossible to cross any pedestrian.
I don't think there's even any crosswalks across either of the streets right now.
You're absolutely, you're absolutely right.
I believe with the-
I do want to just say that, I know that the university and the city have both formally requested that a signalized intersection, uh, to look at improvements, and it has not met approvals of the art until halfway.
Right.
We were also, I mean, Brad Anderson and a number of guys looked at that. I think most of the funding is there. However, one issue we ran into there is the train tracks are a hundred and eighty feet away from the intersection. Uh, they require two hundred feet away, we're twenty feet short. But due to that, the railroad will require us to put signalized activation that coincides with the traffic light, so that somebody can't stop on the tracks. And those estimates are in the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. To have those for the traffic lights, about a hundred and fifty. So it takes a, a hundred and fifty project that we haven't even had the money for to have four hundred thousand dollar project. So we're working with Chris and trying to, that's why we started looking at roundabouts and other things there rather than just tracks. So it's still in the woods.
Would it be cheaper to just move the intersection twenty feet? Is that possible?
We've looked at that, and then it's really flat, because then it'll throw a kink in the intersection around the middle of the hallways, interchange.
Okay.
So, we're still trying to work that out.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, anything else on that? All right, number five, Vacation fourteen dash forty-six fifty-six, twenty-six ninety-three Valencia Avenue, Riverwood Homes, in ordinance approving Vacation fourteen dash forty-six fifty-six, submitted by Riverwood Homes, property located at twenty-six ninety-three Valencia Avenue to vacate a portion of the utility easement and drainage easement in total of approximately forty-two squ, forty-two square feet. Jeremy?
This is a lot within the Sunbridge Villas neighborhood. Uh, there's an existing thirty-foot, uh, utility and thirty-foot drainage easement on the northeast property that was platted with the subdivision. There's a request here to vacate a portion of that easement. It's an odd-shaped lot, if you look at, um, it's not the best map, the page four. It's right in the corner, on the exterior of the corner, so it's sort of a pie-shaped lot. In order to fit the house on that lot, they are requesting a small portion of the easement to be vacated. Um, there were no objections to that, and the city is recommending approval with, uh, no conditions.
Any questions on that?
Can I just make a request that on these, uh, plans, that we have kind of a vicinity map in the corner, so we can tell what area of the city these are in?
Sure, there is a, um, it always includes, it's a little bit further back in the packet, page seventeen, it shows a vicinity map at the one mile, essentially gives you an idea of where the site's located, um- of where the site's located, and I should, I should do a better job of just telling you, also in the presentation, this is west of College Avenue, off of Sunbridge Drive, so between Sunbridge and Drake.
Good. Okay, anybody else? All right, number six, IPZD fourteen dash forty-six sixty-two, industrial plan zoning district, seven oh one West North. Nordest establishment, a bridge, industrial plan zoning district, title IPZD fourteen dash forty-six sixty-two, project quarrel, located at seven oh one West North Street, contain approximately point seven-six acres, and many of the official zoning map, city of Fayetteville, adopting the zoning criteria and associated master development plan.
This very well may be the smallest PVD we've ever seen.
Very much important.
Very small.
It is. Point seven-six acres, and the reason it has to be a PVD is because of the manufacturing use that they are, that they're proposing, which is the only way we have currently, I think we may change this, the only way we have currently to classify beer production. And so, the proposal here is to allow for a microbrewery and a taproom. It's, it's a, the space that's being generated, utilized for the microbrewery is, is larger. It's not like a, the Hog House, which is primarily restaurants, small brewery, and I'm not sure they even brew their beer on that site anymore, anyway, but it's not that. The primary use of that facility is a restaurant, and then there's a small brewery. This is primarily a microbrewery with a small taproom, much more like, there's one off of, of Poplar Street currently, and it's in an industrial district, so it allows for that use. Rather than zone this back to an industrial zone, and then come, which comes with all the industrial uses that you get with that, that use, the PVD was recommended as the way to go. This property is located at six ninety-three, seven oh one North Street, right at the, close to the trail crossing on North Street. It was formerly associated with the Ranco Lumber Yard, Brooks Graphics, for example, was one in the west building. This proposal is to utilize those existing buildings to provide for the beer production and distribution. It is, as I mentioned, considered a manufacturing use, it's not allowed in a community services zone. The rest of the property, you may remember, you just rezoned this to community services about three meetings ago. This is not the entire site, this is just a portion of that site, to allow for this particular use. So, about two thousand square feet of the building would be used for manufacturing the craft beers, and about one thousand square feet would be used as the taproom and bar. You can see the information, this is, this is a little atypical for your PVD, because there's not really a large development plan we're reviewing, lots of things through the planning commission, and went through the same process, and so they made a recommendation on the development. You all are making a decision on the zoning for the property, but you can see, as you read through the packet, that there's very little development and changes going on, on the site, other than some, some minor improvements. There is a maximum, if I can find it here, maximum square feet and maximum output associated with the manufacturing use that will be allowed, so they've essentially kept all of the community services uses, which allows them flexibility in the future to use the property for something else, should it change over time, which we, we like that, but also allow us for manufacturing specifically, and this is in the zoning criteria, so that'd be part of the zoning, the only manufacturing use would be a microbrewery and approximately one thousand square foot taproom and production capacity, not to exceed five thousand barrels per year, and so that's very specifically added to condition it upon, that, that would be the primary use. If they wanted to change that in the future, this is what their proposal was to us, not something we came up with to, to cap them, that was their proposal to us, and so, we were, we were certainly supportive of that. Staff recommended approval of this PVD request, and the planning commission also voted in support of it.
Any questions on that? Okay. Number seven, Environmental Consulting Operations Incorporated, ordinance waiving the requirements for competitive bidding and approving agreement with Environmental Consulting Operations Incorporated for wetlands mitigation sites monitoring and management, two thousand fourteen, in the amount of thirty-three thousand dollars. Don?
Yes, Mayor. The city used to contract with Eco Consulting Operations Incorporated, Bruce Shackelford, on our Woolsey Wetland Prairie annual maintenance and monitoring contract. That contract expired in December, prior to David's departure, and did not get renewed. We discussed it at the Water and Sewer Committee about getting that contract renewed. We conducted the burn this year through CH two M Hill's contract, but want to continue due to, frankly, the knowledge of Bruce and the development of these mitigated wetlands, to continue contracting with Bruce on that. So, we've removed the burn portion of that out of this funding, since that's been conducted for two thousand and fourteen. We're asking for a waiver to select Eco Consulting Operations because of their expertise with this Woolsey Wetland Prairie for two thousand and fourteen, and then we'll bring a renewed contract for fifteen, that encompasses it all back together again, but that way we get the annual maintenance planning, herbicide treatments, the things that have to happen through the remainder of the year, as well as the monitoring of our mitigated wetlands.
Questions? Okay. All right, number eight, CH two M Hill Engineers Incorporated, amendment number five, resolution to approve amendment number five to the agreement for operations, maintenance, and management services between the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and CH two M Hill Engineers Incorporated to increase the contract in the amount of eighty thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and to approve a budget adjustment. Don?
If you recall our, our discussion previously about wanting to pursue the engineering services with RJN, was to allow Shannon Jones, the city's previous internal project engineer, to work on projects that had already been started, that would have cost more money to begin with, rather than starting over with a brand-new contract. Though, that contract is for those items. This contract is to allow us to continue, to add under CH two M Hill Engineering Services, rather than refilling the position at this time, to handle new projects that are coming through in our capital CIP program, and also to prohibit us from having a bottleneck, because typically, some of these projects require certain skill inventories, that, an example would be, we're currently in a design project for a new disinfection system that's moving from the ultra, ultraviolet, is Billy in the room?
Yes, that's right.
Ultraviolet to our ozone treatment, the expertise that they'll bring to the table to design that, have engineered stamped drawings and things we need to move forward with that project. Doesn't stop just at one person, we can have, they have a much deeper team that allows us to then take someone who might need an expertise in another part of our water and sewer system designs that could be utilized within CH two M Hill, as opposed to having it within one engineering item. We also felt it was important that the utility director would be able to hire their own staff when they came on board, and so, we wanted to get, contract these services on, and then they could make the assessment, whether they wanted to go to how the city worked previously by contracting, or make the decision to, to refill the position in-house once they've had some time to get in, evaluate the utility and utilize it. So, this gives us this contract amendment for engineering services until those decisions are made.
Questions? Yes, Alan?
Can we move this to consent?
Anybody have an issue with that? Okay, put it on consent.
Thank you, Alan.
All right, number nine, CH two M Hill Engineers Incorporated, resolution to exercise a new five-year option to renew the agreement for operations, maintenance, and management services between the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and CH two M Hill Engineers Incorporated.
Bringing this to you now, we talked about this being on the, at the last agenda of the Water Sewer Committee meeting, that we're famous for running around at the last minute trying to renew these contracts. We didn't want to be in that scenario. We're in the last six months of the year of our first five-year term. We have two optional five-year renewals. We would like to exercise the first option for a new five-year period. Since we were bringing the engineering item through, we thought it was appropriate to just bring both CH two M Hill items at the same time. We are extremely satisfied with the performance of CH two M Hill and their operations of our wastewater facilities and the partnership that we've had with the city. We went through an RFP selection process five years ago, I guess, or four years ago, and they were selected hands-down in that process, and we continue to be pleased with their services and the partnership that we have and the resources that they bring to the table, and so we'd like to continue that relationship.
Can we move this to consent?
I'm good with that. Anybody, everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Uh-huh. Okay, thank you. All right, number ten, city council support for firefighters, resolution to express city council support of legislation in action to create a assumption that firefighters, to develop certain forms of cancer, develop those cancers through their work as firefighters. Alan?
Um, thank you all for the opportunity to talk about this in just a minute. I've been working with Representative Letting and with the Arkansas Association of Professional Firefighters. Arkansas is one of only ten states that don't have some form of legislation that make it a presumption of illness, when a firefighter has been exposed to the things that the mayor mentioned. This resolution is in support of a bill that Greg Letting is working to get passed in the House. I'm also working with Alderman across the state to have them pass similar resolutions. Two weeks ago, I was, had the honor of attending the funeral of Bud Plancham, a community member here in Fayetteville, who's a firefighter, who had been fighting this exact fight for over five years with, with the state, and trying to get legislation passed. That was unsuccessful, but I think that if we build a coalition across the state in support of this, that we can affect change positively there, and so I'd just ask for your support of that.
I've co-signed on this piece of legislation as well. I, something that I have been working on for a while, that and the mental health legislation for our service employees, fire police, and I think it's something, if you look at the studies, and we know that forty states have already brought some sort of presumptive legislation forward, you know, if you, I would really encourage you to do the research on this, and look this over, because we know that in, in Cincinnati, a study that, studied the risk for twenty different cancers, including prostate, skin, brain, rectum, stomach, and colon cancer, non-hostile lymphoma, and malignant melanoma, are associated in varying levels of increased risk for firefighting. And for that reason, I'm going to support this, and I'm going to support it statewide. Now, I don't mind also telling you that I don't think the municipal league is particularly thrilled with this piece of legislation, and, well, so be it. But, anyway, but I believe that we're going, we're going on with it, and I'll probably, you know, will be campaigning for this other places besides here. Now, Chief Murray, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
I just wanted to voice our appreciation for the council, and hopefully, the council will support this as it moves forward. We appreciate Mayor Jordan and Alderman along bringing this forward. Whenever you get into this business, it, you know, it's, you're young and bulletproof, and, you know, it's, and it's all exciting, and then a little bit, you know, later on, you find out that the average life expectancy of firefighters is ten years less than the average population, and as, as you mentioned, Springdale had three firefighters retire and didn't live very long afterwards battling cancer. We've had one member of, of our fire department die, around thirty-six years old with cancer, I believe it was, so, and we're just now, we've got the numbers, we see the effects, we're trying to find the cause, and, and there's some exciting research going on into how we can prevent some of this, but, again, appreciate council's support on this. Any questions for me?
All right. Number eleven, Block Avenue Parking Resolution to reaffirm the back-end parking design on Block Avenue between Dixon Street and Spring Street. Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to give you all a little bit of background on this discussion, in two thousand and ten, the Transportation Division made the improvements to Block Avenue. Before that, Block Avenue was a two-lane, one-way street that was very underutilized, didn't need those two lanes of, of travel, and it had parallel parking, very few parallel parking spaces. So, the goal of the Block Avenue project was to make it a more pedestrian-friendly experience, widen the sidewalks, narrow the travel lanes, and provide additional parking, and that's, we feel, feel very good about the project, and those goals were all met. Block Avenue was, was different than many of the projects that, that we had done, and the back-end parking was one of those things that was different about it. So, at the time that it was built, right after it was built, due to some discussions from business owners and, and others, the, the Transportation Committee, Street Committee at the time, discussed making changes to that, so we prepared cost estimates for that for a couple of different scenarios, and the, the committee at the time decided not to make any changes because it had just been done. So, recently, we had essentially the same request to reconsider the back-end parking, and that's what's in front of you here. The, the Transportation Committee considered it at the last committee meeting, and there was no consensus, so it was just simply forwarded on to the, to the city council with no recommendation. The, two different costs are presented. One is including modifying the concrete islands to basically reconfigure them so they point in the, in the opposite direction to minimize the number of spaces lost. The other one is just simply to revise the, the parking, put the striping at, change it from, from back end to pull in. Both of them include taking up the asphalt in the parking area to, so we don't have striping that we just mill out, and then we have the remnants of the old striping and the new striping. So, it includes the paving, and that's, some of you guys may have reviewed this and wondered why the cost is so high. That's the reason, is because the asphalt is, is to be removed. The first option, if we, if we changed the islands, we would lose three parking spaces, and the cost of that's about forty-three thousand dollars. The other option, if we just leave the concrete islands alone, we lose more spaces, eight spaces, and down from twenty-eight to twenty, and the cost of that item is twenty-eight thousand dollars. Staff is not recommending we change this. It's, it appears to be working, that the benefits, as we presented back in two thousand and ten, include, you, you back in, then you pull out into traffic, you can see much better, much safer situation. When you open your car doors, you open them towards the sidewalk, so if you have children, that it can't run out into the street as easily, and then if you have packages or anything like that, you want to put in the back of your trunk, it's right there at the sidewalk. So, those are the benefits that we presented. This has been done some in other areas, I think some of the same concerns, complaints have been presented in, in those other areas, other cities, so it's, we're not unique in that way, but this is what's in front of you, and again, we're not recommending any changes, but if the, the council wishes to proceed with this, then the next question is, how and when do we get this done? The, the transportation work plan is set for this year, so if you choose to, to have it done immediately, then there would need to be an adjustment in that work plan, and we'd have to sort out what project wouldn't happen, and then if it's to be added to a future work plan, then it would just have to be considered among the, the other priorities that the council has. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
All right. Let's see, we have one more.
Yes, we do. We have a walk-on to this session. I want to thank Sandra for emailing it out to you all, so you would have as much notice as we could to get this to you, and it's really, I think, a good item. Let me take you back to two thousand and five, when the city was attempting to encourage Biobase to move its main facility down here into Fayetteville. They are a more ecologically friendly, home insulation type business. They had labs and production facility, and in order to encourage them to come here, we agreed to sell nineteen acres approximately of the old water sewer headquarters and pipe yard that was- of the old water sewer headquarters and pipe yard that was in the corner of Razorback Road and Cato Springs Road to them at what we believed was a reduced cost. The total amount we received for that was nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. And it's not terribly out of line by something else that, another time that when I was on the council was offered to be purchased by housing people are going to offer us a little bit more, but not a whole bunch more. But we felt it was at a reduced cost there back in two thousand and five and because of that, we certainly wanted to try to protect the taxpayers' interest and so we had a provision in there, paragraph fourteen, that said that if the property was sold within ten years, we would be entitled to a portion of the net increase in value of the raw property. We would get seventy-five percent if it sold within the first five years and then forty percent if it sold within the first ten years. Now, the city council agreed to that, we sold it to them. It was closed in two thousand and six when the final closing, that's when the date would begin. And as you see, that the ten years won't end until two thousand and sixteen, a couple of years from now. We, I was contacted by BioBase Realty, who actually owns the property, and they indicated that they would like to sell the property to the University of Arkansas. They have been renting the building to the University of Arkansas, which I think has been, being used for technology and business incubator purposes, I think. Something's been very helpful for our city because it has created new businesses and is just a very fine addition to our city. And BioBase did build that building. They didn't build their production facility, but they did build that building. They had, they were in negotiations with the university and the university wanted to buy it. And so, we scheduled a meeting with the mayor and senior city staff, myself, and they, and university officials came in and BioBase Realty's people came in. And we, we talked about paragraph fourteen. They had done appraisals of that because paragraph fourteen required appraisals. Well, they had done appraisals, the university had an appraisal and BioBase Realty had an appraisal. Well, as you might expect, those appraisals weren't identical. And so, when we looked at the numbers, they were different enough that we all, the mayor and I and the rest thought, said, we, we have to follow the contract. Contracts has an independent appraisal. And that doesn't mean an appraisal from the university or appraisal from BioBase. It means an appraisal that we would pay for. So, we went through a selection process very quickly since it was not going to be a very expensive appraisal and we got an independent firm that had not worked for either university or BioBase on this land and they gave us an appraisal. And according to that appraisal, the amount of increase times forty percent came out to be two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So, I gave the appraisal to BioBase and told them what the computation was. Then you'll see in the packet that I got an email back from BioBase, which I just received and that's why we're having to walk it on here kind of at the last second, I'm afraid, where the co-managing member of BioBase Realty LLC, Phil Phillips, indicates that, yes, they understand our figures and the appraisal, but in fact, they simply, they're, they're losing money on, on the deal anyway. In other words, I think that the cost for them to build their building is not as much as they're getting paid for. So, I think they're suffering a loss there. In fact, in order to make this sale, I think they have to bring some hundreds of thousands of dollars to the table to pay off the debt before they can then use the university's money to pay off the rest of the debt. So, it's not like they're making a profit on this, but they're, they're trying just to end the deal so that they can pay off this debt and have it over and done with and sell the land to the university and the building to the university. The university's been renting it from them on a monthly basis. The university would like to own it. I think the university would like to do other things with this land, hopefully in the same general area, although there's, I'm not seeing any plans. So, because of that, rather than just offer two hundred and two, and if they'd offer us two hundred and ninety-two thousand, we wouldn't even be here tonight because the contract says we can accept that. But they didn't. They offered two hundred thousand. And two hundred thousand dollars, I think, is, is something that the city councils should seriously consider and the real issue here is, is whether or not it's in the best interests of our citizens to accept this two hundred thousand dollar offer. And on page three of my memo, I outlined factors that I think show that possibly this is a good thing to do and that I can recommend to you and the mayor can recommend to you. First is that they're really not making money and this might be, this is probably the highest amount we can get from them. The second thing is really the most important factor to me, and that is, if we cannot settle with them, then they can just wait for a couple of years and then they will pay us nothing because the amount, you know, they'll be beyond the ten-year period and at that point, they're not going to pay us anything, they don't owe us anything. It's just over. When you look at, run the numbers on this, if it was forty percent of, of the two hundred and ninety-two thousand, what they're offering at two hundred thousand is still about sixty-eight and a half percent of the most we could get if we, if they had done it in year six. And here it is, year eight. Another factor, I think, is that if you had looked at the university's appraisal and based it on that and they asked us to do that initially, that was a hundred and sixty-six thousand. That's, that's the appraisal I thought was not an independent appraisal and so that's why I felt like we had to have another appraisal. So, we're getting, we'd be getting thirty-four thousand dollars more, seventeen percent more than what we would have received at a full forty percent of the university's appraisal. And finally, I think, I think it is, this, this sale, at this point in time, is desired not only by BioBase, but also by the university. And I think that we should recognize that the university, which is our largest and most important, largest employer and most important economic engine in this city, is something, is an entity we should help and assist. And I think that our help and assistance of the university could very well foster a new high-tech innovation, which has been going on out here, and maybe even further expansion. I don't know any plans, but I think that that is certainly something we should take into account. We were talking about helping Whole Foods. I think here, the most important economic engine, the most important factor in Fayetteville throughout its last, at least century, has been the University of Arkansas and its impact upon us. And I think therefore, that's something else we should consider. Not only is it good for our taxpayers in getting two hundred thousand dollars that we didn't think we were going to get, but it will help the university finish this agreement and, and get into maybe the business of doing some further expansion in there. And I see we have a representative university here. I don't know if you want to say anything about this. Probably not. He is wincing, so I won't put him on the spot. And I would say he was not there during the discussions we had in the office. They had other individuals, so I don't want to put you on the spot there, Admiral, sorry.
Thank you, sir.
I'm certainly available and so is the mayor for any questions or concerns or comments that you might have about this. The reason, in response to the requirement to make it speedy is that you can see from the email, we worked very hard to get it here as quickly as possible, we just could not get it onto the regular agenda. But time is very important to them to get this underway and so that's why the mayor agreed to walk this on today.
So, if we get this two hundred thousand dollars, what fund does it go into?
It would go back to the general fund, so it can be used for whatever the general fund can be used for, which is virtually everything, I guess, Paul. What do you think? So, it, so it could be used basically for any general fund activity.
So, it could...
It could buy the traffic light.
Buy traffic light down the street.
It's like sale the tires to fill and that goes in.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Well, what do you all think?
It's what I can say.
Are we good? All right.
That means I can't talk to the city council, I mean? That's right.
You'll find a way.
I'll pull it off. Thanks, I appreciate this and...
I do too.
They get the good thing for us.
I do too. All right. We have three presentations tonight. Well, actually, we had four anyway, but the regional park update, Allison, I believe you're going to give first. Well, they, Paul, I thought you said they were going to go first. You said they were going to go first, the regional park.
I can't.
Oh, you can, they can go second, I haven't heard. I'm here all the time anyways.
All right.
I'm going to be here till the end. All right, huh?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council.
Good evening to you.
Yes. I'm here for our quarterly report, reporting on activities from January to March of this year. Even though the weather has been a little bit uncooperative for this quarter, we saw an uptick in activity. Okay. Just need to hook it up. All right. Okay. a variety of sectors. Food retail chain store and multi-student housing, warehouse space, grocery store, a food manufacturer, actually international, staffing business from Fort Smith, a residential facility, insurance company, and even a developer that specializes in hotel and convention center. Interested to look at our city. And we establish, continue to work with three international contacts, basically Singapore, Panama City, and Colombia. The Singapore company does recycling, they have a technology that is, as of right now, the only one in the world that can convert organic waste into organic fertilizers within twenty-four hours. So, they're looking at Arkansas, particularly in Fayetteville, they like our brand of sustainability. They're looking at establishing their United States headquarters. Our challenge is to find them a site, particularly the site for a demo set. The headquarters is easy because it's office, whereas the demo site, because it's organic, using organic waste as a raw material, there is an odor that could possibly be present, especially in the summertime. So, we are now looking at actually extending it out to Washington County. That means the demo site is in Washington County, but the headquarters is in Fayetteville. So, this is something that we're working with. Panama City, we are, we have to reschedule the mission to Panama City from earlier this year to sometime late summer or fall because of the contacts there not being able to receive us. And this will be a visit that we will be most likely expanding to the city council, to the mayor, to follow us on this trip mission. It could be a three-day thing, we leave on a Wednesday and come back on a Friday. It's going to be a hot pack, meeting with companies, meeting with the representatives, the leadership in Panama City. Colombia is something that our, one, another startup of our company that established, they developed a new coating for solar panels that can even make it more efficient. And we're looking at working with a company in Colombia to do the production because of their capabilities over there. We received three RFP requests, two we could, two we could fulfill, one we have to turn down because we do not have the site. Six site requests, all this is about expansion, moving in here from other places, and three requests for business information. New businesses within this ninety days or so, you see a, a total of three hundred and twenty-four FTEs and hundred and thirty-three new businesses from October thirteen to March fourteen, because this is the start of our contract. And we back out, we back out businesses that have closed and then the FTEs that were lost. A good portion of them came from actually Dixie Cafe, restaurants that hire a larger number of the FTE. So, with a net of hundred and fifty-six point five FTEs and hundred and twenty businesses.
Do we have wage data on these new jobs?
We do not collect the data on the wages, simply because these are private companies, so they are not under the obligation to review it. The only way we do it is actually, we group it by using federal information. So, there are occupations and there are average wage of occupations per MSA. So, these are information and data collected by the government and then they try to distill it, but to, to the level that is sensible or logical to collect because if we need a particular, if we have to drill down to all the levels, most likely we have to hire a consulting company, like let's say like Cathedax Center, to do a detailed research, yes, to collect those kind of data.
I think it would be interesting to at least see what type of jobs we're creating because, you know, there's a lot of evidence in the recovery, we're seeing a lot of low-wage jobs replacing the high-wage jobs and I would really like to have more information, you know, about that.
We can give you job categories and they do give a, a federal benchmark, it's the one that waits, usually a range, but it's a low range. It's always at the low end, it's below a hundred. We can, with our companies, they obviously don't have to comply, but we certainly are capable of and will to begin to build this database. Ask them specifically, would they give us at least their beginning salaries and their highest salaries? So, we'll be doing real-time data, not a statistical norm, at least we'll compare it against it. And we'll make that a part of our report and get it back to you.
So, in general terms, like our retail, that means like Target and Harbs and all that, the entry level, stock, the stalkers, the cart pullers, they usually start above minimum wage, which is about seven fifty, and then within ninety days, they go to about seven seventy-five or eight dollars. There is talk, like for example, Old Navy, Old Navy beginning, effective June of this year, they are, as a big, as a corporation across all Old Navies in the country, they're going to raise their minimum wage to nine dollars an hour. So, so this is going to also benefit our Old Navy in Fayetteville.
I just wanted to add to that as well. As part of our business license program, we don't ask for wage, but we do ask for what's called an NAC code, which I believe is what the city is referencing. Essentially, it's a category, general category of work. Unfortunately, it's only as, as good as the owner puts it. We're actually going back through those NAC codes now, our G I S position, and creating a whole, what we feel like is honest data, looking at the business and what their business is and then correcting the NAC code for our own purposes, so that mine is just, is that effort in terms of the question.
Yeah, I just think it would be helpful to us in terms of planning services because if we've got a lot of poverty wage jobs, we need to find a way to compensate for that.
We do, and actually, later on, I was, when we visit our businesses one-on-one, then this is where we ask them about the wage range, so that's how we know, like for example, call centers, depending on whether it is outbound calls or inbound calls and whether technical skills are needed, like for example, when you have an AT&T and you call AT&T, something to do with your smartphone and all that, those are, those are considered a technical call representative and those get paid easily at thirteen dollars and above per hour, yes. But when it is, let's say like a cold calling, insurance agent, hiring a call center person to, you pick the yellow pages and make phone calls trying to set up appointments, then those are between about nine or ten dollars an hour. So, it depends on the skill sets needed, even though you're just like, let's say, by NAC code, you're just like, you know, you are a call center representative and then you can break it, you can drill it down. And those, you have to go actually more one-on-one to, to understand it. Like our manufacturing jobs, they could easily go up to twelve and thirteen dollars. Like, our manufacturing jobs, uh, they could easily go up to twelve and thirteen dollars an hour now, for, in Fayetteville, yeah.
We would appreciate your working with us to develop a question, as a part of our questionnaire, some real, uh, actual, real-time data, so that we can make a part of. That database doesn't exist, we need to start building it, so that gives us both the materials to make the argument, that there needs to be better wages, and that the wages that we are, are the types of businesses that are being attracted to our community. Many of these new businesses, we didn't attract, they just started, you know, so they obviously came down, and they came because of environmental issues. But someone decides to open up food service business, that's their decision. Businesses we attract, we obviously spend a lot of time looking at what is the wage structure is, and are doing more to that because of living wage issues and concerns. But, uh, we also should know, note, and it would be very helpful, and I think to the council, and I appreciate you bringing it up, it would be very helpful to see if the kinds of new businesses that are starting fall in a particular category. Uh, because there are some businesses that were innovation, businesses that started here, and they didn't start at eight dollars an hour, they started higher, and they have continued to be higher. And so, uh, instead of having anecdotal information, we'll start collecting, but we would like your help if you don't mind.
Okay, be happy to do that.
Yes. Um, so we are spending more time on business retention and expansion, if you were to kind of like, uh, prioritizing business attraction, business retention, and then entrepreneurship development. The reason being, um, the existing businesses are, um, in general terms, are expanding and hiring. So, even though if they're a small business, they're hiring one employee at a time, uh, when the time comes. Uh, the larger employers are more, um, into looking at, especially when they get a new contract, and they have to put in a new line, then this is when they would hire like thirty employees at a time. Uh, we also have issues with workforce, um, trying to stay, trying to get good workers at the beginning. So, right now, employers, especially the manufacturers, are also looking to, um, making use of the, uh, hi, the, um, employment agencies. The employment agencies to kind of like do, uh, the screening for them, and then by the time they go into their company, they work for about ninety days, or temporaries, and then once they work out good, then they convert them into permanent workers. So, this is, this is something that we have been helping. And, um, for Carter, during this quarter, we helped them to get some state incentives, uh, in terms of workforce, uh, uh, support over there. And then we are, right now, still continue to work with the Midtown Merchants, trying to establish, uh, some kind of our priorities for them to, in order to improve, uh, College Avenue. Um, and this is, the local companies, what happens is that we took along, um, a representative from the A, from the A D E Q, Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality, to talk about the recycling tax credit. And as a result of that visit, uh, three of our Fayetteville companies actually submitted about more than five hundred thousand dollars worth of claims. That means the equipment that they spent, uh, buying recycling equipment. And so, as a result of this, they could claim up to a third of the money back in terms of, in the form of a tax credit. So, this is money back to our employers, uh, which is a good thing. And, uh, we continue to meet with our Commerce District, bringing information, and also, and it's an example of a success with this continuous meeting where the mayor comes and the chief of staff comes whenever, is that, um, O R T. Uh, they express, um, they express the, the challenge of their workers who have unreliable transportation to go to work, and so they create a turnover problem. So, O R T actually, effective this Monday, April twenty-eighth, now has an exclusive route, um, that comes from downtown all the way to the Commerce District now, beginning this Monday. It's a new route, uh, that is now, uh, offered to, to the about more than two thousand five hundred employees that work in the Commerce District. So, hopefully, now our next job is to partner with O R T to bring the information to the employees, and hopefully, they will take advantage of it.
New route has a, has a connector from the north end of the city, so you can take O R T routes that were in Springdale, or Lowell, or Rogers, and connect there to that direct route, directly to the Commerce District. So, for, in particular, for, uh, a couple of those manufacturers down there, uh, it was very, very important, because they now have workers that can be delivered right to their door.
Yes, because of the routing system, they have to do transfer stations, so one thing very good, we work with, um, they work with the university, so the Lot Fifty-Six is used as a transfer station. And now, we are also looking at, within Fayetteville, how to find a park and ride site, so that you could kind of like park your car in Fayetteville, and then pick the bus and go all the way up to N W A C for a dollar twenty-five. And it's, yeah, so. Um, and we bring information to our businesses, so we invite speakers like Cathedag, Mayor Jordan, and then Randy Zook is the, uh, president of the Arkansas State Chamber, uh, Mike Malone, Northwest Arkansas Council President, to bring timely information to our businesses. Because we believe that when they are informed, they can make good decisions and plan for their business. Um, we conducted the, this is the twenty-six one-on-one business interviews that we talk about, more in details with the business on anything from wages, or the strength, or the areas of their challenges, so that we can find solutions to help them. Um, we partner with other partner organizations to bring free seminars, uh, business coverage structures, the new market tax credit. Uh, the new market tax credit is good if you're considering, um, expansion, and it lowers the cost of borrowing, basically, uh, for the companies. And then website in a day, this one appeals to the small businesses, they're trying to reach out to small businesses that do not have a website on their own, and, and literally, within one day of attending the class, you have a website by the time you leave the seminar. Um, entrepreneurship, we receive six inquiries that give you a kind of a general idea on what kind of a question to ask, uh, ask, like, you know, how do you start a business in Fayetteville? How do you open up an independent cinema, and how do, you know, in terms of biz jerky, the health ruling, uh, regulations, and all that. And, um, the entrepreneurship boot camp will start in the summer for high school, and we are now actually actively trying to get applications. Uh, we work with the city and the university on gathering and supplying information for the STAR project, what this one is. It's another benchmarking project that kind of like is done, um, in communities throughout the country. So, depending on your score, then you kind of like, then brand your community as on where you are, and, uh, we are hoping, uh, to get a pretty good score, so that that way, when you are comparing our community with other communities, this is the standard, and it's easily understood. And, and so hopefully, this is another way of attracting, um, whether it is individuals or businesses to our community. Um, cost of living index is always asked, part of the numbers that we keep track on, and the Job Expo, we just completed the Job Expo last Friday. Um, we provided this platform to about forty-nine, uh, businesses and agencies, and then about three to four hundred, uh, people came to the Job Expo. Um, and this quarter, we connected with twenty-nine partner organizations, ten nonprofits, and over a hundred and five businesses, uh, from Fayetteville. So, um, and I'll be happy to take your questions.
Two, three other things I'd just like to add, uh, so you would know that, uh, you can do a couple of others. We literally, uh, have done a little bit of focus on retail, high-end retail. Um, and it's easier said than done, honestly. But we are now in some dialogue and conversation, it's not a matter of, uh, proprietary data, uh, with Apple about, uh, an Apple retail store. We have an Apple outlet on the university campus, but we had some, some of, uh, your citizens, uh, say to us, you know, well, we'd like to have an Apple retail store. So, we thought we'd just take the, you know, let's just go straight at them and see what they say. And, and most of the time, they say we don't talk to people like that, you know, gossipism. But we are in some conversation there. The second thing, I'd like to say, the benefits that we have for Carter, uh, as your economic developers, are directly responsible to, for you guys. If y'all hadn't helped, that wouldn't happen, so, you know, the state only does that when the governing body of the city says, we will do that in partnership with you, so thank you very much. And then the third thing is, uh, we're in the process of planning the redesign of our website, and at least in part of the discussion, we would be taking the economic development part of our website and leave it there, but create a second, uh, direct connection to that. And, uh, and so we actually, uh, reached out to Corvallis, uh, Oregon, because they, uh, have a very active website there, and, and they're not as far along the process as we are as the city and some other areas, but they're leading the country in some things, and we've got some good ideas and suggestions for them. I have reached out to you, and Chung has on my behalf, to start asking you to meet with us, uh, one-on-one, and I have a meeting tomorrow, actually, with Councilman Gray, former Gray. But one of the things I want to ask you for is your ideas, because what we're trying to do, learning from what we learned from Corvallis, was that, uh, crowdsources, the better we crowdsources, the better we're gonna come up with, the kinds of things people are looking for. And so, uh, just plant that seed, because we're, over the next four or six weeks, I hope to, uh, have a chance to, uh, one-on-one with each other. And that's one of the things I'll be asking you, if we're designing a new one, what would you like to have the content to include? And how do you see it, if you think it would, we're trying to get to something that is no more than two clicks from anything you want. That's, that's sort of our target goal, but then you have to begin to think, well, what are the things people really want? And, uh, when we designed this, you know, now, five years ago almost, um, world's a lot different than it is today. So, we have to have, so thank you for your help.
Yes, and also, part of the meeting will also encompass, as we talk about the establishment of an economic development fund, so what are the items that we want to look at when we are talking about that fund? And, and so, so that's what we're asking for, that one-on-one, as we prepare moving forward. So, this one is just kind of like this last slide about the good news for the quarter and the challenges. So, business inquiries are picking up, existing businesses are hiring and expanding, and, and the region overall is reaching the five hundred population, uh, by summer this year. And so, what is the significance of this, is that it puts us on the next level. Because as, um, as the external environment look at a community, they look at certain, uh, benchmarks, and so this is an important benchmark for the region. And it means that it brings us a different level and looking at different things. And so, so we believe that this is a good thing for the region, and we are trying to anticipate, uh, what to do and to prepare for it, and to be proactive. So, our challenge there now is the lack of commercial and industrial inventory, because it's one thing for us to look good, to brand well, and to do all that, and then when they start coming in here, uh, we don't have the assets. We have green sites. So, right now, we are actually very, very actively, um, engaging our landowners and our developers to start looking at it. Um, they, they are still, they're coming out now, uh, compared to three months ago, because they have been hurt by the recession, and they are very careful. But then we are seeing some movement, uh, amongst them, meaning that, uh, they are now asking for geotechnical studies on their land, they are looking to pay on their own, doing environmental, uh, phase-one studies. So, that is a good sign, and now we are just continuing that conversation and encouraging them. And we hope that if you all have the opportunity to interact with them, to also encourage them, because without the building, we are out of the radar screen. Yes, because they do it by finding, like, you know, doing, does this, which community have a hundred thousand square feet building? And then the com, the internet will come up. So, if we do not have one, we are not on page one. So, yes, that's, and I take any questions?
What questions do we have? Okay, thank you all very much. Okay, I believe the next presentation, we have the regional park update, yay!
Okay, um, get it put back into the computer? Or the, I can just flip it in.
Yeah.
Have they gone to sleep back there? Oh, that's. There you go. Okay, I just wanted to give you guys a quick update on where we are with the regional park. I'm not sure what's going on there. Um, as I mentioned before, local associates were hired to complete the master plan, and, um, this is really pretty similar to what you guys have seen in the past. A few things have been rearranged, um, just to orient you, this is Cato Springs Road here, and Judge Cummings is an existing county gravel road that comes off of Cato Springs to the west. Um, so this would be the main entry to the park along that existing road. Um, in previous versions, the road dipped down to the south, it didn't go quite as far as we have shown here, um, so that's one of the changes. But the overall layout was the main park entry and the great lawn being located here, remains the same, the soccer complex still in the lower, um, more flat area of the, of the site. Um, we have flipped the baseball and softball uses, so now, um, baseball are these two complexes, and softball is in this corner, and it just worked out better with the grading, um, the way the site laid out, to have the larger fields down here. So, that's the reason for that change. And then, the majority of the hard courts, um, are located on the south portion of the site, so that would be tennis, the basketball, um, have sand volleyball, and then, uh, a satellite, uh, maintenance facility here, and additional parking. Um, in addition to that, we have a trailhead located here that will, um, connect into the existing trail system that we have at, um, Kessler Mountain now. Um, and then this area here is existing landfill. Um, we also have a future trail connection lined out, this is Cato Springs, will be connecting in the Cato Springs Branch Trail, I'm not sure if that's named yet, but, um, so that we will be connected to the park by our multi-use trail system. Um, this is the phasing, this generally is phase one, everything that's shown in green, um, including the parking, and there are a lot of things going into phase one that you won't see on the ground, um, such, those be underground, um, utilities, water, sewer, electric, those sorts of things, that a lot of the funding goes to up front that you don't see, it has to be a part of the project. Um, but it will provide service to all of these great amenities that we'll be providing. Um, I think I forgot to mention, we will have a, as part of the first phase, a large pavilion, a playground area that will help serve the citizens that are there, that aren't particularly playing soccer or baseball, but maybe their kids are, and this will give them places to go. Um, we also have a trail system as part of this, um, it's not shown in detail here, because we're just not to that level yet. Um, I did want to give you an overall picture of the regional park and our, uh, recent acquisition. This is Kessler Mountain, um, this is existing trail system that's there now. These are the water, uh, water tanks up on that mountain, and as I mentioned before, this will be a trailhead that will serve this area in the future. We'll have to build some additional trail to connect in there, but it's gonna be a really, uh, it's a great expansion and help provide a, a complete outdoor experience there, so we're really excited to have it. Um, also, what.
Do you show any development in, in any of the land that we're acquiring, including, uh, the land we traded for that might be developed beyond just a nature park?
Um, let's see. We may, we need to look along this edge right here.
And the reason I'm asking is that we're working with the Walton Family Foundation about the conservation easement, and they wanted more than the three hundred and twenty-eight acres. They wanted the other land that was traded.
Oh, the traded land.
And I just want to make sure that we are not, that we, that that fifth was in your planning.
Right, okay, we need to, need to look at that, the traded land versus the acquisition, yeah, I can double-check that. Um, also, wanted to give you a brief update on the landfill. Um, this is an active, or what was the active landfill, A D E Q is out there on the ground now, uh, working on this. They're working on this northern portion as phase one, and, um, they have almost cleared that portion of the site. Um, they should be getting into the grading in the next few weeks, so they're moving full steam ahead on that. They've had decent weather so far, so if all goes well, then, um, the plan is that they will be complete with phase one early July, and then they'll roll straight into phase two, which will be the southern portion. Um, there's a, there's a pretty good-sized drainage that runs down the middle of that, so that's how they sort of divided their phases.
So, they're mainly capping it, is that what they're doing?
Right, they're, they're scraping off the vegetation, they'll recap it with about an eighteen-inch, uh, clay cap, and then topsoil on top of that, and it'll be maintained mostly at the meadow. Um, so we'll have to keep it brush-hogged a couple times a year, uh, so that trees don't want to grow up and puncture that cap, but, um, so phase two, uh, will hopefully start in July. Part of that, uh, will be removing trash that's located here, and locating it in this area that'll get a new, um, cap. This area won't get a new cap, which, uh, is a benefit to us, because that will allow us to be able to put some facilities in that area to help, um, make room for the trailhead, so we're excited about that. And, uh, the plan is for that to be complete by the end of the year, so that'll coincide well with our. So, that'll coincide well with our construction. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have or take anybody out there.
How many acres do you have total, counting the 200 acres from what we just acquired?
What's the total? I'm sorry.
Acres?
Let's see, we acquired 376 and...
It's over 600.
Yes, over 600.
So, 600 acres.
And we're trying to come up with acres right now. Actually, we're doing a property line adjustment to combine some of these various tracks. And we believe it's well over 600 acres.
The current contract for the landfill remediation work is estimated about 3.8 million. And that's from post-closure trust funds. And I think, as far as we know, we're still the first in the state to be able to use those. So, it's a good thing for Fayetteville.
Certainly a critical component in acquiring this regional park.
Mm-hmm.
I've had several people ask if there's disc golf courses planned for the regional park. Are there?
We have talked about that, and that is a potential use of that 40 acres as a landfill, because it's not a real active type of recreation. You're not running and turning and doing all those sorts of things. We've talked about that, or potentially just nature trails and passive type uses there.
Several citizens have requested disc golf, so...
Course was going to be allowed on the trails on Kessler, do we know yet?
Well, that's something that I don't know that we've talked about yet, but...
That's been mentioned, may, as something handy, some places. And I want to visit with you about it in detail, but yeah.
Great, yeah.
And I've also had requests for dog parks. So, is there a dog park area?
Yeah.
That might be another good use for the cat area.
It could be, yeah, yeah. We don't have one specifically shown on there yet, but that's another type of use that we certainly want to talk with ADEQ about putting on there. Anything else?
Thank you.
Yay.
Thank you. Okay. That's a great acquisition, you're well done. Okay. We have...
I know you do, I'm glad you do.
We have Wade Colwell, who's going to present to the council a plan for sale of Jason Gully Park. Wade?
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here to ask you for a little over a million dollars to buy 11 acres beside Gully Park. And I thought I'd start off with a little bit of the history on Gully Park. Some of you are newer to the board. And the park was bought, Gully Park was bought in 1989 for about $110,000. Can you believe that? About 23 acres, 23, 24 acres. And we approached Ms. Gully about selling to the city. We paid her out over 10 years and gave her life estate, and she continued to live there. This is an article that was written in 1991, talking about the family and the history of the land. And she and her husband Fred Gully, Floyd and Fred Gully, lived there and never had any children. And they would like to see it as a park, and so it became that. And you're all familiar with what's occurred since then. We've had the Gully Park Cow Patty Run, which I've put on for 10 years as a fundraiser for Gully Park, and helped pay for the gazebo there. The gazebo in the park was built by Alan Dunn. And then, we also built the bridges through the civetan clubs and through the rotary clubs. And the idea on the park was keep it in somewhat of a natural setting. And it used to be a cow pasture, that's where we came up with the Cow Patty Run. And for years, that raised about $3,000 or $4,000, and we put the money back into the park. And then, we'd use later for our scout troop for different scout projects. And boys were doing Eagle Scout projects, they would need money for lumber and bridges and benches, and so we would use that money for that. And for about 10 years, I stopped doing the Gully Park Run. We felt like we kind of had the park the way we like it. And the intention was to have concerts there. The concerts, we have about six or seven years. I know a lot of you have been there. The average attendance on those concerts, about 1,000 people. And Max Mahler, who I work with, he has since rejuvenated the Gully Park Run, the Cow Patty Run. And it's now had its third year. This year, we had over 700 people that ran in the race. They had to turn people away at the last moment, because they didn't have extra bits. And they estimated the crowd there, about 1,500 people on that Friday evening. He has since started a foundation, which you've probably heard of, called the Gully Park, or the Cow Patty Foundation, which again, carrying the theme on. We would have an art contest, that's for the colorful cow you see here. That's been used now as a logo. And kids would win prize money for designing our design every year for the run. This race now raises about $8,000 a year, and the money goes toward the Fable Education Foundation. And that's some of what's been going on at Gully Park. For years, as you look to the east, you see the Dunn's property, Lou and Trunty Dunn. They have two houses on O.R. Road and also about nine acres of land. So, the total land the Dunn's have there is 11 acres. There's a pond on the property. The pond has not held water since 1980. We had a drought in 1980, and also, I think, a seismic event, and that pond hasn't held water since then. We've run the Gully Park Cow Patty Run on the property many times. We've circled their property. They would open up their gates and let us do that. Actually, Mr. Dunn, he's since passed away recently, but even as ill as he was, he would come down and dig a hole for a fence post and reset a gate to help us accommodate for the race. Families' wishes have always been that their land would be, in addition to Gully Park someday. The Dunn's land used to be owned by the Gullies, and they actually bought it from the Gullies. The, that's a little bit of the history. The property is what I would envision, basically remove the fence, the barbed wire fence, and probably extend the trail, soft surface trail that could easily be mowed on the property. There is a building on the property that's a shop building, it's Mr. Dunn's shop building, that very nice, it's the newest building on the property, has a bathroom. Heated and cooled, concrete floor, well insulated. I know Lou Dunn, Mr. Alan's wife, has thought it'd be neat to have a, maybe almost, a community meeting room where the neighbors could meet. A lot of folks walk at the park early in the morning, they could buy for coffee. That's something that I would see being left if the property's purchased. The two houses that are on O.R. Road, that would be nice to have for, if the homes were removed, for additional parking for Gully Park, put that parking up on O.R. Road. And then, maybe someday, look at adding pavilions, larger pavilions on the other side of the property that would then overlook the property. I don't think there's really, we, a dog park could come across. I had an idea before for Gully Park that was kind of, people didn't want to see that in the park. They liked the idea of the park as being a large, natural, open area. A good place to fly a kite. Obviously, the concerts are there, a lot of people run there and walk there. As far as money and development in the area, it is, as you know, the northeast quadrant. There's a lot of developments occurring west of Fable, so we don't have quadrant money that could go toward the park. As you know, there's a new development, we're on O.R. Road, we're at O.R. Road. That's been, I believe, we've had, we've planted now, I believe, 57 single-family homes. And you look at that money, that's probably $57,000. I understand the land north, pardon, the land south of Butterfield School is recently purchased. I'm sure at some point, that would probably be developed. I think the development in the area, that's, I mean, that's obviously mainly single-family homes, and you have Lunt's Apartments that are a little closer to Crossover Road. But the, you know, I think of what I'm asking, I know there's been a lot of priorities with the city's funds. I read in the paper, we now have, due to selling land, a come and go, there's about 1.1 million. So, I think we've got the money right there. The Park Board, as you know, has approved this, I'm on the Parks Board. I don't know if any money would be available for something like this. I've not talked with the Walton Foundation about money. I have talked to Nature Conservancy, I've talked to individual private donors potentially, the idea of maybe private donors could come together, purchase the property, and then the city could then purchase the property from them through an agreement. As far as usage of this new additional property, trails, I mean, I don't think a lot of maintenance would be required other than mowing it the way it's been mowed now. There's a rose garden that is very nice, just right next to the homes. As far as the two homes on O.R. Road, I don't know if they could be removed, they could be razed. If that's something Habitat Committee could use those properties for homes. Maybe the properties could be resold. I mean, they'd be probably close to $300,000 if you just looked at the nine acres that is south of the homes as additional parkland. You know, when I look at funds across the city, I don't... Though, O.R. Road widening was, that's one thing that struck me, is I don't know, was the plans to take that to three lanes or not? Because there's some talk of that earlier, and I've grown up my whole life riding along O.R. Road. My thoughts are, if it were to be three-lane, I think that'd be overkill. I think putting, you know, I think all it needs is filling in the ditches with the bike lanes on each side, and you're good to go. I look at, I know Marty grew up near there, look at Rolling Hills, which was this huge wide street, and still a huge wide street, has bike lanes on each end of it, and still a huge wide street. And I don't think, I mean, I think what's going on in that area that would, that made me aware to not take as much money going into that area and...
Wait just a minute now. Paul, the funds for the roads, they come out of like...
That's out of the Rose Towns Fund, I mean...
That's not...
Okay, okay. No, I wasn't sure if there's a cost savings that could be had with that or not. But the owners of the property, you know, it's, they're not in a situation like Mrs. Gully. And Mrs. Gully was very generous with the donation that she made and with the purchase price that she gave us. Probably too generous. The neighbors helped her out quite a bit as she got older. But she did, we did give her a life estate, lived there as long as she wanted to. The Dunn's want to sell the property and change and move. And they'd like to sell everything at once. I've talked with her a lot about different options on this, maybe not selling the homes. She is amenable to a payment now and to payments later. I mean, she's talked about that, maybe half the payments now, and then they'll have to come a later time.
And how many acres is that, wait again, I'm sorry?
The total land is, including the two homes, is just under 11 acres.
Okay.
The open land...
A million dollars.
Pardon me?
For a million dollars.
She's, the asking price is 1.3.
We've actually put on the market for a million two this past week.
Okay.
It's on the market for a million two.
I know her wishes are that it be a park, be parkland. And, you know, I think it could probably be bought for a million dollars and...
The prime development is there to have access from O.R. Road as well as Magnolia Street, so it has ingress and egress on the two sides. And the main sewer line runs on the west side of the property, and it's already, you know, high-developed, the potential with the sewer lines running right there. So, we have, as a matter of fact, we do have an offer from a developer, but we have tabled that offer until we're waiting to see what progress we might make with the city, because families' wishes are that the city keeps growing.
I think this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to acquire this property. I think it's definitely going to be, you know, sucked up by development. And everybody I've talked to is in favor of this occurring. I know it's, I know the timing is not as good as it could be with everything that's going on in this great city right now.
I can't tell you how many phone calls I've had just from my signs from people walking the park.
The first comment when he put up the sign was...
We would love to keep it as a park.
Yeah.
I had a gentleman walking the trail that stopped me as I stood my sign up, so...
Was this a rich gentleman?
I asked him, I asked him right there, I said, "May I please, please, earn the city a check?" And he didn't take me up on that, so anyway.
I think the shop building would make a great Apple Store, too, by the way. Draw a lot of people to the area. Anyway, that's, I've been working, talking to a lot of people for some time, and I've pestered a few of the aldermen, and I'm passionate about this. I'd love to see this, you know, as a future development for the Far City. I know we have a lot going on, but I just feel like this is a worthwhile opportunity to make a great park even better.
She did indicate, as Wade mentioned, that she would look at payments over a two- to three-year period of time. Of course, that's all open negotiations, but she would look at that if that was something the city could fit in their budget.
Okay, I'm open for ideas as to where the money could come from. And I've not talked to the National Park Trust, that may be an opportunity. As just mentioned tonight, Dwayne Walsh and I were talking, and well, Matt mentioned this, and I'll get to about, maybe the Walton Foundation money might be available towards something like this, which, if their grants are fairly easy to acquire. I think Dwayne would say, did you want to say a few things to Dwayne or...
Well, very briefly, Gully Park is not as big as you think it is. Go out there and enjoy the view, and then realize it's going to be truncated at about two-thirds of distance that you can see. And that's what, in the future, if you're going to act to save this land. It's not as big as you think.
Okay. Everybody's looking at each other, what are your thoughts?
What questions, comments have the council on this? You don't want to think about it, I take it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I appreciate the chance to get in front of you all at once. And like I said, I've been talking to a lot of you and just looking for ideas, trying to make the chat. So, I just wanted to talk to you.
All right.
Do you have anything else, David?
I think so, I just appreciate you all giving us on the agenda tonight on short notice.
You're very welcome. All right. I, we don't have anything else, have a transportation... Oh, Paul has a report.
I know it's late, and I'll be very, very brief, but I want to talk a little about sales tax for the month of February.
Yay.
We bounced back pretty well in February. Actually, we made up about $100,000 of the budget that we were behind. I think, looking at things, we can safely say that the weather did have quite a bit to do with December, and especially January, also, we were going against some very strong months. The city's sales tax was up about 6.1% compared to prior years. Springdale certainly helped us out with the county turnback, because they were up about 7%. As a matter of fact, Bentonville and Rogers were up also. So, I think that's a fair indication to say that the weather certainly in December and January didn't help us. Now, we still have to be kind of cautious going forward. We still have to make up about $222,000 to hit budget. But at this point in time, I think there's a good possibility we may be able to do that. I'm looking forward at some of the numbers, and the one thing that we had in 2013 and 2012, we had some very, very high bumps. At a point in time, we would have like a 9% increase back in 2012. We had a couple of months that were up like 12%, 13%. Whereas I'm looking at going forward, we do have some strong numbers we're going to have to cope with about being up 4% and as much as 5% in a month or two. But I certainly think there's a reasonable expectation, and certainly I'm no forecaster or fortune teller, but I think there's a reasonable, reasonable expectation that we could hit our projections and stay on track. So, something we're going to, we're going to keep monitoring, keep looking at, and I'll keep coming to you and talking. But like I said, it was good news. We did pick up $100,000. However, on the flip side, remember, we're still $222,000 short of budget at the end of first quarter. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
You don't got anything on that? Okay. Well, I guess we don't have anything else, and right now, Roger, you're going to take a short break, and are you just going to move right on in?
We'll do 6:45 for Transportation Committee.
All right.